Monthly East China School Board meeting. We will start this evening with a call, sorry, a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. So please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item up this evening is our new Board of Education member appointment. Lynn Greifhor had to resign her position, so I'd like to just put a shout out there to thank her for her years of service. We were sorry to see her go. But at this time, we do have somebody to fulfill her spot. So I'm going to go right on into the action item unless anybody has any discussion. Okay, so the Board of Education approves the Board of Education member appointment of Libby Prill, effective February 28, 2022, to fill the seat vacated by Lynn Greifhor. So a motion is needed for that.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, so Mrs. Krantz, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Diva?
Yes.
Trustee Chau?
Yes.
Treasurer Zier?
Yes.
Trustee Wester?
Yes.
Secretary Diselra?
Yes.
President Frank?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Welcome, Libby.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
I would thank you very much. It's delighted to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is our interest recognition and inquiry Board of Education members. Does anybody have anything this evening?
I have one. I'd like to send a shout out to the students of the St. Clair High School Theater Troop. They put on Little Shop of Horrors and it was phenomenal. Their voices, it was a musical, their voices were just beautiful. And I believe it's the 25th musical they've done. They missed one year because of COVID last year. So it was great.
Anybody else?
Yep, I just want to congratulate Suzanne and all those that put on The Chili Heart Run. I didn't participate because it was too cold, but my husband did run it. And yeah, he said it was great, so thank you. He said the chili was delicious as well.
Great, and I'd like to pass that thank you along to Brad Robbins and Mike Domagowski.
Anybody else? Suzanne?
Yes, I get to announce that this is the last board meeting that we will have in this room. Our next regular board meeting in March will be held at the Media Center at St. Clair Middle School. As we, I'm sorry, St. Clair High School, my error. Sorry, Ron. St. Clair High School will be the March regular Board of Education meeting as we begin our bond renovations to this building. So it's an exciting time for all of us.
Very exciting. Okay, all right, so the next item is special recognition. This evening's East China School District Endowment Fund Grants, Mr. Bradley Robbins.
Good evening, everybody. Mrs. Prill, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the board members here this evening as well. Appreciate your service and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you as the newly minted Chair of the East China Educational Foundation. We got to do our first good news here and pass out some spring grants for 2022. So we're going to go ahead and do that at this time. Just to give you a brief overview of the foundation, it's an endowment fund through the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. With the Spring 2022 awards, over $192,000 have been given out in grants through the foundation. We had mentioned that the Chili Heart just happened, so that's what we're fresh off of in the cold. People who braved it, we thank very much for being there and giving us the opportunity to do that here tonight, which is give 17 grants ranging from $336 up to $750, covering seven different school buildings in our district. So we'll start with the grants. Melissa Ramo from Garing Elementary. Mrs. Ramo will be purchasing decodable readers for her students to be able to decode and blend unfamiliar words as they are reading. If you are here, you are welcome to come up and I'm sure Mr. Hedley will be taking a picture at the end. So if you want to just stay up there, we'll get you together for a photo and he will do the obligatory squeeze you together. We've seen this before. Stephanie Manano from Palms Elementary. Mrs. Manano will also be purchasing decodable readers for her students to decode and blend unfamiliar words as they are reading. Accepting on behalf is Mr. Westerhoff. Mr. Steve Fox from Marine City High School. Mr. Fox will use his grant award to purchase a new tenor drum harness for the Marine City High School marching band. Mrs. Becker will be accepting on behalf. Allison Sump from Pine River Elementary. She'll be purchasing two GoTalk 32 AAC boards. Students will learn to use these devices to communicate in their educational environment. Amy McNabb from Marine City High School. Mrs. McNabb will be purchasing a classroom set of scientific calculators so that all students will have access to one in her classroom. Lori Hannan from St. Clair Middle School. Mrs. Hannan will purchase one art display board to display student work throughout the school. Margaret Byrd from Garing Elementary. Mrs. Byrd will purchase sensory items to ease anxiety, get rid of excess energy, stimulate senses, calm, and help students focus. Megan Jex from Pine River Elementary. This will be used again for two GoTalk 32 devices, allowing students more opportunities to functionally and efficiently communicate with peers and adults. Keisha Rowland from Marine City High School. Three Vernier Dynamic Cart and Track systems will be purchased, allowing students to test Newton's laws, learn how to work power and energy, relate to each other, and discover and test the laws of conservation of momentum in the lab setting. Madison Wood from Marine City High School. Madison will be purchasing teen books to encourage and improve the reading levels of students with disabilities who are reluctant readers. Kelly Parkinson from Marine City Middle School. Mrs. Parkinson will be purchasing items to run groups that address social and emotional learning. With middle school students, items purchased will be used for group activities that focus on building relationships, trust, and developing problem-solving skills. Andy Scheel, Mr. Scheel will be purchasing items to create a Zen Room. Some of the items on the list to purchase are an electric fireplace, floor lamp, rug, paint, therapy tools, and more. Sarah Reimer from Bell River Elementary. Mrs. Reimer will be purchasing social emotional learning items for her kindergarten classroom. These items will help her students make positive choices when they are upset. Michelle Fay from Pine River, St. Clair Middle School and St. Clair High School. Mrs. Fay will be purchasing Articulation Bingo for a hands-on learning experience as well as providing sensory feedback. Jody Gazowski from Pine River Elementary. Mrs. Gazowski will be purchasing math items that will allow for her students to learn their numbers and improve counting skills. They will also build on their social skills and find motor skills. Chris Blackstock from Bell River Elementary. Mr. Blackstock will be purchasing Hot Wheel tracks and connectors for a steam lab. The labs will teach students about forces in motion, gravity, and friction. Rachel McIntyre from Garing Elementary. The grant award will be used to purchase the Sunday System 2 for students to gain strategies needed to become successful readers. With that, these are our 2022 Spring Grant recipients through the East China Educational Foundation. Thank you to all of you for applying and congratulations. Mr. Hedley is going to come up and take the squish photo. Board members must vacay.
Congratulations to all the winners this evening. We're so fortunate that we have the Endowment Fund Grants. So we're very appreciative of that. Okay, next item on our agenda is the academic spotlight. And this evening, we have St. Clair Middle School, Mr. Brad Robbins.
Okay, I'm back.
You're back.
Superintendent Seibula, President Frank, members of the board. Thank you for allowing St. Clair Middle School to be the academic spotlight today. I think through those grants, we saw that there was kind of a theme, although we did read quite a bit. One of the things that we talked about and what we've tried to make a point of emphasis at St. Clair Middle School is recognition of a growing need regarding social and emotional learning for our students. And I can tell you that even pre-pandemic, there were some things in the works at our building about relationships. And Mike Domagowski, who can't be here tonight because he's representing us in Washington DC at the National Principals Conference, has always kind of implemented or thought that it was important to emphasize, you can't really be successful without positive relationships. And that's got to be at the forefront of what we do. With that in mind, we've implemented a pullback of our traditional seminar time and put in Positivity Project, which is just core fundamental, I think just good citizenship things that we would expect a quality society to have. But we've also built a Zen Room, as you saw, somebody is trying to do as well. Implemented some calm classroom strategies, especially at the fifth grade level. And we're seeing that trickle up to maybe even my office a little bit when I need it. And we are implementing the Trails Program. And we have certain things that are going on in our building that I think keeps these things at the fore. And all of that's great. And I really like that I can come up here and tell you about those things within our building. But what makes them work and what makes them go are the people who are primarily responsible for those things. So I thought it would be important to express great gratitude to them and allow them to talk to you a little bit about what they do on a daily basis. And those people with me today this evening are Ms. Sandy Rutledge, our counselor, Ms. Michelle Pernito, our social worker, and Mrs. Stephanie Neiman, our social worker. And Sandy Rutledge is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about what they do, what they provide, and how they work at St. Clair Middle School. Sandy?
Thank you and good evening. A lot of what we do is behind the scenes and requires confidentiality. We have always worked with academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health issues, many of which are not visible as well. As you may know, over the course of the past two years, the global pandemic has increased our need to service more of our students in more ways. In order to highlight how adding extra layers of social work support to our department has helped St. Clair Middle School, I direct your attention to the screen before you. Imagine the top half of the screen, or that top layer of the screen, is the before the pandemic. And everything below that is the after or additional services that we are now able to offer. Or, to put it another way, we all know that Matthew Stafford alone cannot win a Super Bowl. But with the combined effort of Cooper Cup and Aaron Donald, the Los Angeles Rams are now champions. Much like a counselor, working with the combined effort of two social workers is a winning combination for St. Clair Middle School. The pandemic has changed our classrooms. If we ask you to visualize a classroom that you are familiar with from your past and a classroom of today, they may look the same at a glance. The difference is, today you might see a student who often cannot stay awake in class because they have been on their phone or playing video games until the late hours of the night. The empty chair of the student who misses school once or twice a week. A student struggling with increased mental health issues. A student who finds their safest place, school. Or a student who is socially anxious as a result of the pandemic. Some of these examples are adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, as they are referred to in school and in the medical profession. They are considered such because middle school students are still over a decade away from full brain maturity. Students with four or more ACEs are 32 times more likely to struggle in school. And one of the ACEs not listed here in the top 10 is a global pandemic. During the pandemic, our department was also challenged with how to connect with students without being in person. So we were able to add another layer to our services by creating an online resource center for both students and adults. The first page of our online Bitmoji office site is primarily for adults. By just clicking on any of the icons, you can access all kinds of information. And I would show you, but I've been advised that that may not work real smoothly tonight. So I'm just going to explain a couple to you. And I'll let you know where you can access this and you'll have to check it out at a later date. But by just clicking on the St. Clair icon at the top left there, that will take you right to the St. Clair Middle School newsletter. The next one over the Positivity Project, by clicking on that, it takes you to the Positivity Project for Families component. So families can access that right at home. And they would go right to the character trait that we are working on in school. And there are discussion questions, videos, and quotes related to that trait that families can use around the dinner table at home. One of the first things we put on here was during the pandemic, which is that Google icon. So clicking on that takes you to links and resources for anything to do with Google. So it was helpful in the time of Google Classroom and learning how to use that quickly. The outline of the state of Michigan up there, by clicking on that, it takes you to a lot of local resources in St. Clair County that are there for youth. By clicking on the sad face icon there on the bottom shelf, that takes you to some general resources about coping with grief and loss. The black ribbon on the left would be some resources for helping young children through grief and loss. And then the black ribbon on the corner on the right there, that takes you to resources for teens and working with them in grief and loss. You can see over on the far right side, the check this out section towards the bottom, there are local resources connected there with different events and things going on around the county. By clicking on any of our Bitmojis, it does take you to a student page where students can go to engage in mindfulness activities, listen to a story, hear calming sounds, get creative, or watch a live feed of the animals at the Detroit Zoo. The Zen Stones there on the second shelf, clicking on that, it does take you to a live feed to watch the penguins at the zoo. And who doesn't like penguins, right? And so they're kind of fun to watch and can also be calming as students just kind of get lost in watching them. One of the more popular sites here is the fish tank in the middle. By clicking on that, it does just bring up the fish tank sound, so the filter and the bubbles. And you can actually click on that and leave that going while exploring some other things. Mr. Robbins mentioned the Trails Program that we are using. Mrs. Pernito is using that in some small groups with our students in the building. There are resources here, by clicking on the rug on the floor, that would bring up some grounding strategies and resources from that Trails Program. In addition, the snail on the wall that says stay calm also is linked to a resource that shows you different apps that students could put on their phones and engage with mindfulness activities or calming activities, and that's from Trails as well. So there's a lot of different things. Clicking on any icon will take you to something fun or creative. The skateboard, clicking on the skateboard takes you to more of an art activity. A lot of our students like to express themselves through art and find that therapeutic at times. So there is a spiral drawing activity by clicking on the skateboard. Or the colored pencils and the container on the shelf there, that's a pixel activity where they can use their art skills as well. So it's loaded with all kinds of things. It's easy to access by design, anytime, anywhere. It is linked to all of our individual emails. It is linked to our school newsletter. It is linked to the East China website under Parent and Student Resources. So at this time, we would like to thank the Board, Superintendent Seibula, for recognizing the growing need for mental health and social emotional services and for also supporting our department in being able to serve all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. What a nice program. What happens if you click on the puppy?
The puppy is a mindfulness video. So students can watch that and get some strategies and things to just, it helps reduce anxiety and bring down stress levels by just engaging and watching that video.
This is so cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I just came for questions if there are none, I'm going to sit down and answer every.
Well, actually, could you just, in a nutshell, explain what a Zen Room looks like?
Okay, so a Zen Room is probably exactly how you would imagine it if you typed this into Google, which is what we did. We put calm colors, so we looked at the color of the walls and the way that we could use. If you'll notice, like when you go on airplanes, usually they illuminate, the lights are blue. So they found that that's a centering color for human beings. We painted it blue. Soft flooring, so we added a rug. There is a fireplace in there. We were fortunate to order one from Wayfair and we got two. And they told us to keep the other one, so now we have two of them. And we put that in the staff Zen area. But softer furniture, you know, not traditional areas. And there's a lot of kids are using fidgets, right? So different things that make noise and stimulus. Students just seem to need a place that has softer lighting. So we turn off the traditional lights, put softer lighting in there with the fireplace on. There will be sounds in there, there's a diffuser in there. And then there's a timer in there because students will fall in love with that area and want to use it a little bit too much. So we do have to keep them on academic business, but it does make them ready to learn and better learners through all that stuff.
Thank you. And how can they go to the Zen Room? Do they just ask a teacher or?
So that's part of why I wanted this presentation because I think this stuff happens a lot in quiet, right? And that's okay because there's a confidentiality piece that anytime somebody's struggling with something. But I wanted to put faces with names that students find in their directory for things that they can go to to access these. So you have students who are really adept at using the Zen Room because they're willing to have those conversations with the adults in our building that kind of guide them there. But oftentimes, it's just a matter of somebody coming to talk to me or one of the members of the office and they're surprised to know that we have one. You know, it's not something, I guess, that we marketed in the middle of our lunchroom. But students who talk to the adults and express a need for just a spot for 10 minutes, can you let me cool down? And that's a growing thing. And that's, it's not just for some specific identified student in your mind that needs it, right? It's everybody. I half the time think it would be just as beneficial to have staff or me in there. So it's quite nice.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. A motion is needed for the approval of minutes from our regular Board of Ed meeting on January 24, the approval of payment of bills, the financial statement, and schedule of investments.
So moved.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is recognition of persons wishing to address the Board. We do not have any green cards this evening, so we will skip right on down to item number eight, our Bond 2020 Discussion and Action Items, Mr. Gazalka.
Good evening, everyone. Bring to you recommendation for playground equipment repair and replacement. Currently, the existing playground equipment is continuing to need frequent repairs and is well beyond its expected life cycle. In order to provide safe and adequate playgrounds, the following recommendation is being made. In conjunction with TNP Architects and Ock Construction bids were solicited for the repair and replacement of district playground equipment. Post-bid interview was conducted with the only response a bidder. As a result of this interview process, it is being recommended that Sinclair Recreation be awarded the contract. Any questions?
What playgrounds are we talking about, Kurt? Are we talking about all the elementary playgrounds?
All the elementary playgrounds and the playground for this site for the Early Childhood Center.
All right.
There was only one bidder?
That's correct. There was two that showed up, but only one of them was considered a responsive bidder. The other person was lacking the required documents.
And this, all of this falls within the scope of the bond?
Yes, it's all in the budget and the scope of the bond work.
What will happen to the old equipment?
Well, it'll get destroyed. The company that's taking out the expired equipment will, you know, take it to the dump or whatever.
So that's included in the bid?
Yeah, yeah, it's all included in the bid. And a layer of new wood chips fall surface.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, a motion is needed for the Board of Education to approve the bid by Sinclair Recreation for the amount of $575,000.
So moved.
Support.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right, our next item is our information discussion items. Our Bond 2020 Monthly Update from Ock.
Oh, Jerry's back. Yeah, Jerry's back. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. So, as stated earlier, we're at some exciting times on this project here at the Innovation Center in the ECC. On the early childhood, the addition is starting to take shape. The slab has been poured, so the concrete's down. We're in the phase of doing the overhead work. So that's about 85, 90% complete with all the wires and duckwork things that go above the ceiling that you never see but are there that you really need to work the building. Windows and door installations beginning soon. And then depending on, once we get enclosed temperatures and getting the building right, we'll start painting in there. It'll start with block filler and then we'll be getting to finish colors here pretty soon. So that'll start to really look like classrooms over there. In the existing building, as announced earlier, take a look around. What you see here, you won't see very long. This is going to be transformed back into a early childhood space. So we will be making demolition. The abatement contractors will be coming in and doing the safe removal of the hazardous materials here soon. On the Innovation Center, we are trying to get the roof on. When we get the weather to cooperate, we want to make sure that all the conditions are correct. When we get that weather-tight roof, we'll be shooting to pour the slab on grade by the end of March. So we want to get the roof tight before we pour the concrete. And then we've got the windows, metal panels are in progress. As you can see, the framing and some of that taking shape. And we're continuing to close up the exterior. And now that moves us to, again, that overhead work for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system. So you'll start to see that. The cool part about the Innovation Center is we don't cover it up. You get to see that for the life of the building and the students get to learn how the building actually works. So for us as builders, that's really exciting. Hopefully, we'll get a few of the students to see that and want to do what we do. So tying that, bringing that all together. Any questions on this project or this site?
What's the end date or completion date?
So we're going to be completing in like August, but there'll be things that have to happen after us. So furniture, some of those other things that, as you know, if you've been tracking any of the materials that are coming out right now, we'll hope that they're not on a slow boat in the ocean. We'll just say that. Yes, so at the end of the summer, the building will be complete. Any other questions? Next project, the St. Clair Gym Edition. So that project, as you know, we bid it. We knew that the steel and some of the other things were going to be a little bit longer delay in getting them. So we anticipated starting that later than we had. We are now targeting some select demo and some items in the spring, but the real action on that site's not going to happen until school is out. There's not an advantage to us going and disrupting the site when a lot of the materials are coming when they are. So after school's out, that gym addition's going to start going and you'll start to see some real activity on that site. And then that project will carry through about 12 months. So the next spring, that will be complete. And then down at Marine City, we are working through the final stages of design. That should be coming out for bid here in the next couple of months. We are cognizant of some of the pricing challenges that are in the market right now. And we're trying to make sure we make the best move to getting bids at the right time. 2021 was a challenge, 2022 continues to be a challenge. So we're targeting this so that we can get through when the supply chain has corrected itself and not just having a bunch of guest marks in bids when we're putting things out.
Good deal.
Any questions on that?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, our next item is Benchmark Assessments, District Progress Towards Goals. Michael Walling.
So I am here to fulfill the Section 98B goal reporting related to the benchmark assessments that the district utilizes. The nice thing for us, just to give you a little background, we were using NWEA prior to the state requirement to initiate a benchmark assessment associated with COVID, so it was a seamless transition for us. But I am here to report on our progress toward our established goals. So tonight, I'm gonna quickly go through a legislative overview, and then we'll talk about what our stated goals were, and then we'll look at the data, and then we will kind of do an overview of some of the interventions that are being used in the district to address our goals, and then I can answer any questions that anybody has. So we needed to have district goals set up for the school year prior to September 15th. We did that. Tonight, we are meeting the second requirement, which is to report on progress toward goals by or during the February Board of Education meeting. In order to do that, we're gonna look at the data that was collected from our NWEA benchmark assessments for grades K through 10, and then grades 11 and 12 is a narrative piece, and that'll make more sense once I get to that. But we don't administer the NWEA benchmark assessment to our 11th and 12th graders, nor are we required to as part of the law. And then I will report on additional progress toward goals by or during the June Board of Education meeting, and again, that'll be K through 10 data, and then a narrative description for how we're progressing towards our grades 11 and 12 goals. And then, I've already stated this a couple times, but our state-approved benchmark assessment tool is NWEA data. So our first goal was for all students K through 10 to improve performance in reading from the fall to the spring, so that's our year-long goal. This is the interim portion of that. Goal two, same goal, except for mathematics for every student to improve. And then goal three, this allows us to stretch it out across the whole district. This will sound very familiar because we've talked about mental well-being and social emotional supports that we have in place in the district, but it was that the district will implement social emotional learning and mental well-being programs and supports in order to improve engagement, attendance, and behavior for our students. This is not a requirement of the mandate. I put this on here because, A, I think it is a great graphic that summarizes our, our progress, and it's a really nice tool to be able to get a quick overview. So the goal on this for math, ideally, we want our, so those bars, like the purplish color, that's our observed growth, and then the, the diamonds, that's the grade level norms for projected growth. So that norming piece is what NWEA is built off of. So they, they have a certain number of data points. I believe it's somewhere in total for math, reading, language, and science, it's somewhere around five and a half million data points that are put in there. So it's, it's over a million students that are built into those norms, but as a district, ideally, you want your rectangle, the top of it, to be above the diamond or to trend like that. So as you can see, as a district, we are, we are doing quite well with where we're expected to be based off of the grade level norms or projected growth. You might notice the grade one and two diamonds are the furthest apart. I think the easiest explanation for that is, well, there's really a couple. There's a lot of foundational learning that's associated with those early elementary grades that has been either missed or disrupted as part of the pandemic. And then the other part of that is, you know, the, the NWEA test, because it's a digital piece, there's some unfamiliarity with working through the assessment with clicking on a mouse. A lot of our students don't have experience in that, and in theory, they would have gotten it in kindergarten when they first went and took the assessment, but we've had so many disruptions over the last couple of years. I think that, plus there are so many foundational pieces that our teachers are trying to make up for lost time and disruptive time, that I, I think that works to explain the, the gap there. And, and as you could see, I mean, we're, we're still growing in terms of the RIT scale, so it's not like we've, we've decreased. We're just not quite yet at those projected norms. So that's for math. We hop over to reading. Again, I, I think this is, this is pretty sound data, and we, as a district, I think have done a pretty good job of growing our students from the fall to the winter period, as is shown through our rectangles, either the tops being above the diamond or, or close to in line with the diamond. So overall, I didn't put it in here because it's not part of the requirement, but if you were to go back and look at our diamonds and our rectangles from last year's assessments, it doesn't look like this. There's very little overlap. The rectangles are lagging below the diamonds, and I think that's a testament to our teachers, our building administrators, our students, and the fact that we are back in business of educating kids and, and doing what everybody in this district does best. So I put these in here as just kind of a quick hitter slide. The...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The diamonds, are they, have they been in that same position for a while, like is that based on a number of years?
Good question, yeah. So the, the data for NWEA was last normed in 2020, based off of those, the number of students that I mentioned earlier, that, that data being collected across the country. Prior to that, it was 2015. There's not a ton of change, even if you go back to the 2015, it's relatively small. But yes, that's the expected growth for NWEA from now until the next norming in 2025. These, the subsequent slides just give you a grade level breakdown. I know it's a lot of numbers. I'm not gonna sit here and read through the numbers. I'm just gonna point out a couple things that, that I think we should be proud of as a district. If you notice down at the bottom, it says, "The ones that are in bold met or exceeded the growth projection." So that correlates with the graphs that were on the previous two slides. The next part says, "The, the star means they met or exceeded the RIT projection." So not only are we growing at or above where we were expected to grow, but we're also at where they would project us to be. So it's not like we are below score-wise the norm and we're still growing. No, we're doing both of those at many of our grades. And I'll get to at the end, I'll go through some of the interventions that we have at each of the different levels so that you can kind of see how these pieces line up. And this will be posted on our transparency page as part of the requirement, so again, I know it's a lot of numbers, but you're certainly welcome to take a look at that later on as well. So again, the ones that are bolded and starred, to me, that's, that's, that's really impressive. One caution would be that NWEA has found that the greatest measure of growth in terms of lining up with their studies is actually the fall to spring piece. So while this is fantastic data and we are exceeding what is expected, the, the best analysis comes from how they grow over the course of the entire year as they're exposed to a grade levels worth of content. And again, I'll do this at the end of the year for the spring so that we can kind of draw some comparisons. And you'll notice for, for math, again, we have, we have a couple stars at the, the earlier grades, and we have many bolds which line up with the diamonds and the rectangles from the graphic earlier. If you have questions or you want to ask me about something specific, feel free to have me stop. And one, one side note is, our buildings have taken their building data and have looked at these types of things specific to their building, which is the nice thing about NWEA. It allows us to have a 30,000-foot view, but it also allows our buildings to start to drill down into specific grades that we need supports, and then from there, specific students. And we can do that and have the same conversation from building to building, which is nice about NWEA is, you can have the same conversation for a kindergartner as you can for a 12th grader. And it's just how you support them and what resources you utilize, that's, that's the difference between the two. But the data, how it's normed, how it's collected, it's the same across the board, which is nice. Because if you think about our standardized testing done at the state level, we don't have anything like this. We don't have the same assessment that's administered for kids from K through 10 that we can compare longitudinally as they move through the school district. So it's a nice feature of NWEA. Same thing for math. And then at the high school level, you'll notice that for our ninth and 10th graders, we, for reading, not only did we meet or exceed the growth projection, but we also met or exceeded the, the RIT projection. It's also the same thing for math.
Michael, all students take this, right?
Yep, so actually, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna back up. Give me just one second. I wanted to point something out. So for this, if you look, you'll, you might have thought, well, you said we only did this for K through 10, but we have 11th and 12th grade on there. So those two, there's, I believe it's 19 data points for each. So that was an individual classroom teacher that said, "I like the data that NWEA gives me. I think it's worthwhile using that in my classroom, even though it's not part of the requirement." But yes, every student in our district takes the NWEA. It's a little trickier right now with extended absences and with the pandemic, and, but yes, we are well over 95% for every grade taking the, the assessment, and most grades are much higher than that.
Okay.
Let's get back here. One of the requirements for the mandate is to look at demographic data. I don't think this is as pertinent at the district level in terms of being able to drill down and tell a story, but as you can see, we looked at all students, math, and then reading RIT growth, so just their raw growth. And then we looked at our students that are economically disadvantaged, so that would be identified through our 31A intervention reporting. And then we also looked at our special education students. So I think the common theme here is, while they may not be growing at the rate of their general education or their, the entire student body, there is still substantial growth being achieved across the board for our students. And again, this, this drill down, in my, whoops, in my opinion, is best done at the building level or the classroom level by our building administrators or intervention teams or title teachers, but as part of the requirement, we had to look at K through 10 data. And then you'll see the same kind of trend for the grades 6 through 10. Any questions, whoops, any questions about the data before I just go through our interventions that we have in place? So this fits well with the theme from Saint Clair Middle School's presentation. If you remember back to the beginning of the presentation, the third goal talked about mental well-being and social emotional supports. So as a reminder, across the district, we have Calm Classroom, we have Positivity Project, we have Trails Tier One and Tier Two, among other supports. And then as a district, we have seven social workers who are East China School District employees, and then we have additional grant-funded social work staff that work at our Marine City campus and then at Saint Clair Middle School as well. And they work individually and in small groups with both our general education and our special education students on an as-needed basis. And then this last slide just is, a lot of this will be familiar, but these are just some of the interventions that we have in place. Our ExactPath Mathematics and Reading Personalized Learning Software, that's the program that connects directly to their NWEA score. And I, I think, I, I know if you were to ask our principals, they would tell you the, the great value in this program. And I think if you asked most of our teachers, they would, they would comment the same. It's a, it's a really powerful program for students that really helps to meet them where they're at and, and allows them to grow forward. So the, the second intervention is the Alex, which is the Artificial Intelligence-Based Mathematics Personalized Learning Software. That's our math program that hooks up with our math curriculum at the secondary level. Again, that is set up, the students take an initial learning assessment, and then from there, it plugs them into a personalized learning pathway, and they're kind of able to grow at their rate, and the rate that they're comfortable with. Another program that's been widely used across the board in our secondary settings. We have our elementary-level academic interventionists, so we have two of them. Lacy Fisher and Kristy Muscat have been fantastic additions to our district. The, the things that they've done at the elementary level are, are really impressive, working with alongside our teachers and alongside our building administrators to meet the needs of our students. They've, they've, as a team, accomplished a lot in a short amount of time. Then we have seminar time at the secondary buildings, and some buildings that's used in an academic sense, as you heard Mr. Robbins talk about for Saint Clair Middle School. It, it has a social emotional leaning, which is great as well. That's an important intervention. And then obviously, you know, some of our greatest work is done by our individual teachers in their, in their classrooms, and interventions that meet the needs of their students that are sitting right in front of them. We have credit recovery options for our high school students. And then we have the, the Student Center at the secondary level, which fits a variety of needs for our students. If anybody else has any questions, I would be glad to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move on to our action items. Our first action item has to do with the internet service and our least-lit fiber connections bid. So a motion is needed that the Board of Education approves the bid in the amount of 123,600 annually with Community Educational Network for Internet Services and Least-Lit Fiber for a period of five years, July 1, 2022 to June 30 of 2027.
So moved.
Support. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, our next action item is for our 2021-22 General Fund Cafeteria Latchkey and Student Activity Budget. So the board adopts, a motion is needing, needed for the board to adopt the 2021-22 General Fund Cafeteria Latchkey Student Activity Budget at the function level as revised and presented at our January 24, 22 meeting.
So moved.
Support. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and that motion carries. So again, just a reminder that next month's meeting will be at the Saint Clair High School Media Center, and with that, we are adjourned.